I usually do it on the computer.
Yeah. I do too, that's not wrong.
Okay, this is the September twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Planning Commission. And Leah, if we can have a roll call, please.
Thomas Weeks.
Present.
Paul Saccolato.
Here.
Donna Peterman.
Here.
Lisa Cullythorne.
Here.
Sherman Johnson.
Present.
Brad Gamblin. Joseph Como.
Here.
Harvey Goldberg.
Here.
Okay, if we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Announcements, our next meeting is October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, here. If there are, at this point, we'd like anyone to step forward for any comments they'd like to make before our group. You have three minutes, please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Gary Skilicorn, I bet you're wondering why I'm here. I guess my major interest is making sure that the minutes that were published from the last meeting represent fairly what had occurred or what should occur. I would like to have clarifications and corrections. On August the nineteenth, at approximately four P M., an email was forwarded with a revision to the staff report. It went to most of the Planning Commission, except for Mr. Saccolato, and to most of the city council, except the mayor and Jahah Cummings. Kind of a strange distribution of that. The revised staff report included significant deficiencies regarding the architectural consistency with the two thousand and forty comprehensive plan. The deficiencies are quite remarkable, yet the staff report still recommends proceeding to the Planning Commission and the council. I would choose to read a few, but I won't do it short of time. Of even more notable is that the revised report has still not replaced the original in the case file. I find that remarkable. Things that I would like to have changed within the minutes, revise the introduction to the record of the staff report to include and specifically reference the August nineteenth version. Is there some reason why that version is not and has not been available to anybody of the general public? It has not been. Second item. I would like to have it introduced to the record of the revised staff report to P D O two, two thousand and twenty-two case file. It's currently not there, and it should be there. And last but not least, and I think many of you came out of business, commercial, or government, it's good practice to utilize revision numbers or dating of our documentation to provide for good configuration management. I strongly suggest that the city continue or consider revising the policy to include that. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, next item is actually the approval of minutes from the August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. I would also like to thank the clerk, it was a very exciting meeting, and I appreciate the fact that you captured the facts without the drama. So, do I have a motion? Do we have any comments about the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes of August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, Planning Commission being.
Do I have a second?
Second minute.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes have been approved, thank you. Okay, our next item are the quasi-judicial hearing procedures. Obviously, this would have been useful to have had at our last meeting, which I understand is now going to be part of every package we get, and I would strongly suggest that anyone who is on this board familiarizes themselves with what these ask for. I don't think we saw that the last time. It was, I don't know, it was not the best experience of my life, but I don't think we want to have a repeat of that. So again, I would just hope that everybody reads these and understands what they ask for going forward. All right, next item is three B, quasi-judicial, which I'll read. S V zero-one, two thousand and twenty-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, vacating a portion of that certain ten-foot-wide alley lying in the block four-five, City of Ponte Gorda, also known as the subdivision of Lot Two and one-half of Lot One and Block Four-five. Ponte Gorda, as recorded in Plat Book One, page sixteen of the public records of Charlotte County, Florida, more particularly described in Exhibit A, attached heretofore and incorporated herein, providing an effective date. And also, we need to swear in anybody who plans to testify at this or the subsequent hearings. So Leah, is anybody planning to give testimony? Please step forward and raise your right hand.
All right, do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I did.
All right, when you are ready to speak, please step to the podium, state your name and indicate you've been sworn. And just a reminder, when you speak, just make sure the microphone is green and try to speak directly into the microphone.
And when you come forward, please state your name for the record and your residence. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Good morning, Lisa Hannan, zoning official, and I have been sworn. I'd like to enter our staff report into the record in its entirety by reference. This is a street, alley vacation for three-twenty Harvey Street. It's to vacate a portion of a ten-foot-wide alley. The applicant owns at least sixty percent of the adjacent properties, which is one of the requirements. There it is shown. Comcast and Florida Power and Light have both been notified, and they had no facilities and have no objections to the request. Half of the existing alley is accessible between West Olympia and where the alley ends. The remainder is obstructed with some trees and growth and probably some structures in there. Finding number four is that sanitation does not use the alley for servicing the adjacent properties. They do it street-side, they had no objections. Development Review Committee recommended approval, and Urban Design Staff also recommends approval of the vacation request.
Any questions for staff?
What are we doing with the rest of the alley?
The alley that goes middleway back to Olympia will remain open because it is used right now. There was no request to vacate the entire alley, only this half of the alley. No, there's no barricade needed. It's just, I mean, people have planted stuff there, this is just available, this is not really available to be used. It's an unimproved alley. The other has been improved by the little, the little cluster housing that's already there. They use that as their ingress egress throughout their little community, but this, they've stopped at their property. So this from there to, I think it's Virginia over there, they don't use that portion of the alley. The gentleman owns three-quarters of the properties, and he would like to be able to use it. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't have a problem with that. My problem is, we vacate half of an alley, we put a half of an alley on vacation, and then the other half of the alley is not on vacation, it's kind of strange. I just don't know why we don't vacate the whole down alley and get rid of it.
They didn't request that, they didn't ask those folks to be part of this application. I can't answer why they didn't decide to do that.
All righty.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If anyone wishes to address the commission on this item, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, my name is John Schalfo, and I have been sworn. The owners of Lot twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty-one of Block Forty-five in downtown Ponte Gorda is asking the City of Ponte Gorda to vacate half of the alley located in Block Forty-five, which is dividing their properties. The applicant has, the applicant is owner and has owned and maintained seventy-five percent of this unused portion of the alley for nearly fifty years. Block Forty-five is bordered by West Virginia, West Olympia, Goldstein Street, and Harvey Street. Only half the alley is accessible via by West Olympia and is used by Ponte Gorda Villas. The alley has no access from West Virginia and has trees blocking it. It's used between Lot twenty-seven, twenty-nine, twenty-eight, thirty, making the alleyway nonusable. So to answer your question, is if someone comes down from Ponte Gorda Villas, they can go down the alleyway to a certain point, but at that point, they either have to fully back up or they're backing up onto the applicant's property. So this, again, the applicant has maintained this property, because the city doesn't maintain this alleyway for nearly fifty years. So that's why they're asking for this alleyway to be vacated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Done, thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. If anyone wants to speak on this item, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and that you have been sworn. Last call, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and that you have been sworn. Okay, motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
You have a second? Thank you, a vote? In favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, comments?
No comments.
No comments? Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Based on the evidence and testimony presented at this public hearing for item S V zero-one dash two oh two-two, I find that this request is consistent with the City Council, City of Ponte Gorda's comprehensive plan, and move that we recommend to the City Council approval of this request.
Motion seconded.
Okay, we have a motion or revoting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Okay, item three D, quasi-judicial.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair. The applicant is on his way for the next three quasi-judicial hearings. It is your, it's the committee's call whether they want to continue on without the applicant here. They are on their way, I just received a text.
So should we just move to the bylaws? Since they're not here, let's move to the bylaws. There's no reason to sit around and wait, okay? Thank you. So Sarah, can you describe briefly the process for doing this? Because other bylaws have not appeared as well. So I just want to know what we're doing here today.
So, we're going to continue the discussion that we have held previously. I know it's been a while, I apologize for that. Can you hear me any better now? Is this better? Can you hear me okay? Okay. So I apologize for the delay, but we are bringing back the Planning Commission bylaws because last time we presented them, there had been a request to consider whether or not the board desired to keep the duty that pertained to the capital improvement plan. So we are coming back at this time to receive final clarification on the board's recommendations to City Council, at which time we will schedule an item for the City Council to consider whether or not they'd like to make any changes as well, or go ahead and ask us to draft a resolution for their adoption. Would you like me to continue the presentation?
Jill, thoughts? It seems like there's been a lot more included in your proposed revisions to the bylaws or amendments to the bylaws than solely that regarding the, you know, duty number seven. When I look at what was submitted, and there was nothing at all as a comment or anything else about that one particular item that we said, we don't do that, we've never done that, why do we keep doing that? Or why does it say we keep doing that? So it just seems like there's been a lot more included, especially in terms of the way it was presented, and, you know, and Jill, you can let it be known that, you know, I sent a letter to the House Office concerning the bylaws and some ideas I had about not specifically the Planning Commission bylaws, but about the process in general about how bylaws and things like that were amended, were changed. And one of the points was something Mr. Skilicorn mentioned that still drives me crazy. Nothing's dated. There's nothing that says revision, there's nothing that says draft.
Well, that is something that we could go ahead and add in, particularly if that's requested. We can go back and find all of the prior revisions, they're always adopted by resolution. So we can include a history of revisions at the bottom of the bylaws.
I don't need a history of revisions. What I'm trying to do is fix a process that says, in the future, when we do this, it's like, in here, you've included a copy of the bylaws with the changes that y'all had said were going to be in there. But again, it does not say that it's a draft, it doesn't say that it's a revision number. It's not signed, which is fine if it's a draft document. But in the previous submission of, at the last meeting, the proposed changes to the bylaws that were submitted along with a copy of what was labeled the existing bylaws, those existing bylaws were not dated, they were also not signed. There was a signature block for the mayor there.
The reason it wasn't signed is because we included the electric copy of the document, which is more ADA compliant, to try to limit the city's liability.
Okay. But again, even if it was an electronic copy, it can be annotated as a revision or a draft or working papers or something to know that it is not a final document. Or if it is a final document, that you know this is an existing set of bylaws for a city commission.
That's what we intended to be conveyed by labeling the one set the existing bylaws and the other the proposed bylaws.
Okay, so Sarah, I just want to ask the question. Do these bylaws change with the adoption of the new LDRs?
That is something that we'll probably have to revisit.
Anything right now that are not in alignment with whatever the LDRs are going to be. And again, as somebody who was part of the H P A B and what happened, I do not want to be part of another body that has the same outcome. So I'm feeling a little queasy about endorsing anything till we know what the ordinances are going to be. Just to be clear.
If the board would like to make a recommendation that no changes are made until the LDRs are closer to the end of their updates, we can convey that.
I think I would be comfortable with that.
Yes.
So I only have one question, because currently it says we're going to make recommendations for capital items.
We never make recommendations.
I know, but it says we will.
Well, I know, but we don't.
I was going to bring that up as well.
So if it says we're supposed to and we're not going to, then why would we have it?
We don't, and that's one of the things we would like to remove.
But currently, it's in there, so going forward, if it's in there. I mean, how are we going to address that? Just say, we don't have any capital items to suggest?
We don't, that's not our role, that's a financial thing, we do not do that. We haven't done that for years, apparently, and it's been there.
We're specifically referencing under item four, Commission Duties, Paragraph C. It's not that we can do it, we've never done it. I've been on the commission for six years, and we've never been asked or provided anything in a manner of documentation or a request to provide this.
I didn't even know when the budget was, it says a couple months before the budget, which we don't even know. I didn't know when that would be.
No, impractical, we don't, I don't know why it's there. But again, I think the sentiment is that we don't want to do anything to change until we get the ordinances. And just, that would be my view, but you guys can say whatever you like about it.
That's an assumption that the new ordinances will be approved.
Right. But I think for us to do this without the ordinances would be premature.
Well, not only that, but the City Council's implemented a new policy where if you're a member of the Planning Commission, you cannot be a member of any other board. Okay? So that condition.
I don't think that's necessarily finalized yet.
Oh, yes it is, I've got a letter to that effect, I've got a letter to that effect.
I think if you look more closely, you'll find there's different facts involved in that, but that's not a hard and fast rule yet. But that's not for, yeah.
I'm just saying that the letter says that the policy of the City Council is that no one can be a member of more than one board. That's the policy, signed by the city clerk. And as a result, I can no longer be a member of the Code Enforcement Board, okay? Which I come up for renewal in November. So and I was told that was the basis for that.
Sarah, can you validate that?
Council had a discussion that they did. I'm sorry, is this better?
That's much better, thank you.
So council had a discussion recently that they desire to limit the number of boards that individuals served on. They are going to let people who are currently serving on multiple boards continue to serve on multiple boards, but as members come up for reappointment, it appears that they are going to attempt to try to fill those positions with new individuals.
So, back to the point about the minutes, I have the two minutes. Sets of bylaws from the last one, they both have the exact same title, City of Ponte Gorda Planning Commission bylaws.
I think I'm following now, I'm sorry, I was looking at the digital copy. I'm used to working digitally. We could add a, I know what you're talking about now, we could address that in the future for the printed copies.
Painful, painful years doing, and you need to know what revision or what copy of something you're working from. So it just, it's a process thing, has nothing to do with Planning Commission, it has to do with process.
Yeah, at a minimum, I'm a date.
I do not think we're in a position to approve any changes today. And I think there's too many moving parts. I'm told the LDRs, maybe we'll see something at the end of October, maybe we won't see anything for nine months. I would hate to approve something that's not in alignment at this stage. That would be my personal view.
Well, even if these were adopted, they don't have to be, but if they were adopted, then as we approached the adoption of the LDRs, we would of course go back and review the necessary boards to make sure that whatever is in the bylaws will be in accordance with the updated land development regulations. But if we could get either a formal consensus or a motion. But if we could get either a formal consensus or a motion, that would be much appreciated.
We reviewed all this before, right? And these changes we already made for the most. I mean, we discussed-
Other than the one item.
Right.
In my opinion, I think according to Robert's Rules of Order, this may, correct me, but it may require a motion for tabling until such time as we might state that is can be recalled.
That would be sufficient, or if you'd like to make a recommendation to city council that the bylaws not be updated until we can ensure that the new bylaws align with the upcoming changes to the land development regulations.
And I have one other question. Is there a procedure that says how to prepare the bylaws? I mean, from this whole revision dated conversation, do you have a procedure that says, or whoever, that says this is how we will create bylaws?
I do not believe there is a formal procedure.
And I believe that is the case, and I believe that is what I addressed in my letter to the city clerk, offering to meet and try to establish some set procedures that would be uniform across boards and commissions to prevent some of the confusion and things that seems to appear when we come up to these. Again, and in terms of the proposed, you know, you have a draft of the proposed bylaws, and then in addition to that, you have one with the changes and strikes, and when you go through that.
That was requested by council that we start preparing that as well.
Yeah, and part of it was because I requested from council that they start doing that sort of thing, so that you can see what sort of changes have and haven't been made and where they were made in the text. But I have some substantive issues in this that are in addition to the one duty that in my seven years on the board, we've never done or been asked to do.
And the purpose of this discussion would be to address those changes that you would desire be made.
And we can start those today, or we can table it to a future discussion, but I think some of the issues need to be brought up, if for no other reason that other members of the board can hear ideas that because of our beloved Sunshine laws, we're not allowed to discuss, ex parte, so to speak, or outside of this hearing. So they, this may be the first chance anyone else gets to hear what someone else is thinking about ways to change or make this process and/or commission more efficient or responsive to the needs of the city council, because in the end, that's our responsibility. We're an advisory board to the city council, and how do we make ourselves more responsive to the needs of the city council?
Okay, so Sarah, let me ask the question. Is it possible, because it is the Planning Commission, which I do believe has a significant impact on the city, especially as it contemplates development going forward, is it possible to have a workshop of the Planning Commission to discuss this topic?
The bylaws?
So it's in Sunshine, and everybody can weigh in on their thoughts, rather than in this particular forum?
Could I ask what the purpose of having a separate meeting would be?
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes, what would be the purpose of holding a separate meeting?
Bylaws.
Yes, but we can address those within-
So that everybody can bring their ideas forward, because I do think everyone agrees that this board is incredibly important. I don't think we want to get it wrong, and I don't think we want to end up with some sort of public rebuke because we didn't do it right. Okay, so I would suggest we have a discussion that's noticed, that we can talk about the bylaws on how we proceed going forward.
We could go ahead and schedule an item for next month's meeting if you would like.
Well, that would be fine. What?
Okay. In lieu of that, as opposed to an item on next month's agenda, what I would hope we could discuss in a workshop, without the formality of Robert's Rules of Orders that we have here and minutes and everything else, is a more freewheeling discussion between board members.
There has to be minutes even at workshops, and we can't-
It has to be open to the public.
It can be open to the public, but I mean, as opposed to going, to have a more open and free, because I've been to a couple of workshops that they've held on budget and other things where there is more back and forth discussion, and I think, I think that members of this commission and even the public who have expressed great interest in this body, you know, would be interested in, you know, how it actually works and, you know, what should it be and that sort of thing, and still coming out with what the city council wants and, but more structuring some of the nuances, and even such things as, "Do we really need seven members? Do we really need alternates? You know, can we work with five? The city council works with five." You know, there's basics, you know, procedural and functional changes that could be made, but we don't really have a chance to discuss the pros and cons of them in this sort of a forum.
You do have that opportunity. That's what this period is for right now. We are very limited in our ability to schedule additional meetings with the Military Heritage Museum. They are coming into their season, and they have a lot of additional events scheduled. They've already asked us to strongly, you know, limit any additional changes that we are, have requested. They cannot accommodate additional meetings at this time.
Could I ask a question, please? What input came on these bylaws? What input came from the actual Planning Commission? Or was this something that was written strictly by the city?
Most of the changes, at least most of the changes, have been proposed by the city. Let me pull up the presentation again. I can't remember if you were sitting last time.
Because I'm kind of hearing some resistance here.
So, the bylaws, we had reorganized the information. We're trying to increase the consistency of all of our bylaws, so we've adjusted the term language. We've included the requirement for members to become familiar with policies and procedures in the Board Member Handbook and to attend any mandatory training. We have changed the terminology for officers to chair and vice chair. Changes that were made specifically to the Planning Commission were that we replaced duty three regarding adoption of an official city atlas with the duty regarding providing recommendations on annexations or de-annexations, since the board does hear annexation public hearings, but they were not reflected in the bylaws. We went ahead and added a new duty five to indicate the commission provides recommendations on special exceptions, as that is another duty that the Planning Commission has been fulfilling. That was not reflected in the bylaws. Additionally, we've addressed the allowance of an alternative meeting location, since we will be meeting at the Military Heritage Museum for some time. We revised duty seven to better align with chapter 26 by including neighborhoods, and we also have fleshed out the meeting procedure in alignment with the Board Member Handbook and revised language regarding continuances.
Did I get an answer to my question?
I'm sorry?
Did I get an answer to my question about what input the commission has had into these bylaws?
At the previous meeting, the commission had indicated that they found the changes that we had made acceptable, with the exception of the duty regarding, let me pull it up real quick. I don't want to misphrase it.
Except for the capital.
Yes.
We already reviewed this. We all said this is good, except for the capital.
Okay.
So if there are comments that you would like to make about changes you would like to see, it would be highly appropriate to make them at this time. That way, if we do bring the bylaws back closer to the land development regulations, we can make sure that those changes that are desired are being represented in what we bring forward.
Okay, having been the victim of more than one line-by-line review of documents, I hesitate to go through a line-by-line review, but I have a number of questions and things. I understand that's what we did some months ago, and I remember it being relatively cursory. I think enough things have happened in the interim that would mandate a closer look at things and a review. I mean, I can go through this, and I'm not sure if anybody else will, you know, to subject people to this thing, but.
Maybe you have some highlights that you can present to us to give us to think about, and we can table it till the next meeting so that we're prepared to respond.
Now, the first thing I said, I don't see why we need seven members. I think we could do with five members. I don't see a need for two alternates. I think under Robert's Rules of Orders, if you have a quorum, you can hold a meeting. You don't need to seat alternates. If you've got a five-member board and you've got three out of five, you can hold a meeting. Our last code enforcement board, we had four members there. We held a meeting with only four members out of seven. We had a quorum. So if the city has a continuing need to fill vacancies, and every city council meeting, you see the list of vacancies we have, you know, we can-
We don't have that on the Planning Commission, though. We already have, what, three alternates?
Well, going ahead-
But we have other people that have-
Oh, applied.
Okay.
We're talking to each other, not to her, okay?
Going ahead, we, you know, we can reduce the numbers. Members of the commission shall be residents of the city of Punta Gorda. At first, I thought, okay, that makes sense. Then I thought, eh, maybe we should say cities and taxpayers, or resident and taxpayer. And I thought, you know, and then I've had a couple of people come to me who are not residents of the city of Punta Gorda, but have a vested interest in the city of Punta Gorda and have been active members of our community for many years, but the fact that they live outside the city limits, they're precluded from participating in city activities. Yet they come to city council meetings and speak and things like that. Would it be worth considering, you know, a, you know, members on the Planning Commission or for other boards who are not necessarily residents of Punta Gorda, but have some special qualities?
We have that on other boards. There are other boards that have that stipulation.
That do that, you know. There's nothing bestowed upon you automatically just because you're a citizen. Yeah, it's a nice, it's a starting point, but is it necessarily required?
I have a question for staff. Do all boards require the members to be residents?
I'm going through, she asked me for them, and I'm going through them. Appointments may be made for a member of three years. Appointments shall be served at the pleasure of the city and may be appointed. I was also going to add a clause in there that says may be removed for cause, depending upon what the council might do. Under officers, officers, oh, no. Under members shall review and become familiar with. Members take an oath, and they should sign that they understand the oath, the roles and responsibilities, and will adhere to Florida law, city policies, et cetera. More than just being sworn in by your office, sign and acknowledge, "I understand that this is a formal oath. It is a legal oath. It is an oath that I take that says I will uphold the laws of Florida and the ordinances of the city of Punta Gorda," because the quasi-judicial hearing procedures are Florida law. It's not something that you want to say, "Okay, I'm going to do this, or I'm going to do that." It's Florida law. This is what you can do. This is what you can't do. And you need to understand that. You take an oath to uphold that, and you don't have the option to say, "Eh, I don't like that today. I'm going to do something else." You've sworn an oath to adhere to the law. So, you know, filling vacancies, and this may be kind of quirky. Do we have procedures for filling?
Joe, keep reminding us where you are, which paragraph you're speaking of.
Paragraph 3A, bunches of duties.
So are we going through all of these, or what are we going to do?
She asked me, and I've only got four or five more pages.
No, I know, but that's, I'm not sure that's what we want to do today. I mean, Sarah, I don't think you're going to get an approval today, would be my guess.
Oh, and that's fine. We just want to make sure there is something that needs to be addressed before we bring it back again, that we do so.
But I think maybe at our next meeting, we should block, if you don't want to do a workshop, let's black out more time and go through this, because it's obvious that there are concerns, and especially how the HPAB meeting went. We need to make sure what we present is what we want to do.
So I'm a little confused, because I thought it was, your initial proposal was to table it until the LDRs are done, and now-
Well, I would like to, but that's nine months away. Chances are. So, I mean, it's like, we can at least have input on what we would like to see pending what those are.
Particularly if it's something that doesn't relate to duties.
You'll have to get closer. Your mic, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I was saying particularly if it doesn't relate to duties, then we could make sure that we have everything else cleaned up beforehand. That way, it's easier to focus on the duties when the LDR update does come through.
Did you hear that?
No, I'm still-
We didn't hear it at all.
I am sorry. Can you hear me now?
I can't follow you.
I was saying that we could definitely make sure, too, before we get to the LDR update, that we have everything else cleaned up. That way, when it's closer to time, we'll be ready to go. We can address the changes that need to be made to duties. That way, they can be adopted in a timely manner.
Okay.
Yeah, again, I mean, I think I'm in favor of, sorry, I'm in favor of coming back at our next meeting. I mean, Joe has gotten us started. I would suggest everybody spend some quality time with these, and let's have the discussion. It will be public, and we can see what we're going to do, but right now, it's highly unlikely we're going to say, "Good to go." Based on everything that's happening.
Is it, is it reasonable to think that, we've done this with other matters, particularly with city staff, that members of the Planning Commission could provide their comments or thoughts or recommendations to the city clerk's office? City clerk's office would-
Then put them together.
Compile them and send them out as one document instead of us sharing amongst ourselves.
Yeah, we can take all the comments. If everyone can get them to us, say, two weeks before the agenda, then we could add them to the agenda packet so that everyone can review each other's comments to be prepared to have discussion. That's been done with other agendas.
And they would be, they would form the basis of discussion and recommendation.
That would be great. I think that's a good idea.
Can I ask a question? When do we anticipate, Lisa, you may know this better than anybody, when do we anticipate having the Fishville Plan Development before the Planning Commission?
Lisa Han, a zoning official. Right now, it is scheduled for the November 28th Planning Commission and the January City Council meeting.
Okay, so if we do this with the bylaws at the next meeting, it won't interfere with that, because that's liable to be a long meeting also.
Okay.
So would the commission like the bylaws presented at the next meeting or the following one, then?
I mean, we, the point is, as Joe was trying to make and others, we want to go on record with our, with our concerns, comments, and recommendations.
I think October could be fast. That would just be me.
Move up there.
I think October could be fast, but if we all get our comments in.
Yeah, I think it's fast, too.
We could wait until November if the board would like. It's up to you.
And you can't time Fishville. You don't know if Fishville's November or not.
I just asked the question. I don't want the two things-
You're saying November, January, but maybe not.
I don't want the two things on the same agenda.
Consistent with your initial, maybe we just table it till the LDRs so that we're not revising this several times.
Well, that's nine months.
Yeah. The reason I started this was she said, "Let's go ahead with this." I said, "Okay, here I go." I, you know, I have sent some of these to the clerk's office before. I can be more than glad to summarize chapter and verse, line by line, what I have already done, and be ready to discuss it again and submit it to the clerk's office again to, you know, for everybody else to review. But anyhow, the only thing that stays in place is that we still don't think there's any need to get involved with the capital improvements program. The budget office seems to have that well in hand.
They do have wonderful plans.
I think that's correct. So let's, you tell me when you would like to schedule. Meanwhile, I would like to suggest that everyone on this commission- Meanwhile, I would like to suggest that everyone on this commission look at the bylaws. If you have suggestions, comments, send them to the clerk's office. They will compile them and then we will have a discussion. Well, we have a motion to table it till the next time, okay?
Well, we have to make that motion. And the reason why, working in that process, at least from my perspective, will be beneficial is I can see all the documentation, all the recommendations, and then I can contemplate them and organize them in my mind and think about what I would agree with or support and what I might not or what other changes I would make. But at least I have something documented and Judge making some very good points. And it'll be recorded somewhere, but it's, right now, it's just up in the air. And I would like to be able to read it and absorb it in that manner instead of just hearing it from commentary.
All right.
I agree with that. Okay.
Motion to postpone review of the bylaws until next meeting and that everyone present submit comments to the city clerk's office at least, what, one week?
They try to put the agenda out two weeks in advance, so if you could get them to us two weeks prior to the meeting, that would be appreciated.
Okay, try to get them to the clerk's office.
The next meeting is the twenty-fourth of October. Two weeks in front.
Two weeks before the twenty-fourth of October.
Make that a date certain and.
Okay. All in favor?
Any October the tenth?
Need a second.
A second.
Wait, wait, wait. Let's get a date because.
October.
October twenty-fourth is our next meeting.
Right. So what day?
Two weeks in front.
October tenth.
To hit their agenda.
So we had a motion in a second, I believe?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I'm not sure that I said aye.
Okay, so this is the applicant. Lisa, is that correct? So he needs to be sworn in?
Yes, ma'am.
If he's going to speak. So before we get rolling here.
Can you just please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth in today's proceedings? When you're ready to speak, just step to that podium, state your name and indicate you've been sworn.
Okay, next item is quasi judicial AX dash O three dash twenty-two and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pontagorda, Florida, annexing within the municipal limits of Pontagorda eleven point zero plus or minus acres located in Charlotte County, Florida, addressed as thirty-two hundred and thirty-two forty Cooper Street, as more particularly described in Exhibit A in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of section one seven one point zero four four Florida statute, redefining the boundary lines of said city in conformance therewith, amending the official boundary map of the city of Pontagorda, Florida, directing the city clerk to provide certified copies of this ordinance to the Charlotte County Clerk of Court, Charlotte County Administrator, Florida Department of State and Florida Office of Economic and Demographic Research, providing for conflict and separability and providing an effective date.
Good afternoon. Lisa Hannan, zoning official, and I have been sworn. I'd like to enter our staff report into the record in its entirety by reference. This is an annexation request for thirty-two hundred thirty-two forty Cooper Street. It's annexation of undeveloped property of approximately eleven acres. It's contiguous to the city limits. Annexation contributes to contiguous growth, strengthening municipalities. The pre-annexation resolution was approved at the August twenty-fourth City Council meeting. Those are the current and proposed city limit maps. So again, the pre-annexation was approved at the August twenty-fourth City Council meeting. It is contiguous. It does not create an enclave. It's within the utility service area. However, utility improvements will be required. It's consistent with the twenty forty comprehensive plan, future land use, transportation, intergovernmental coordination. The application is in order and statutory requirements have been met. This is the first of three applications. The comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment and the plan development rezoning are running concurrently. Utility improvements are required and any development will require Development Review Committee application submittal for review and approval. Urban design staff recommends approval with the following conditions, that utility improvements are accepted, that they will be required and that development requires DRC review and approval. We're here with, for any questions.
Questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, would the applicant like to speak?
Good afternoon. Gary Bain with Southwest Engineering, representing Barstool Properties, the current owner of the property. And again, as Ms. Hannan stated, it's eleven acres that we're trying to annex into the city for commercial development. We just feel that being in the city is a great thing. So we look forward and, you know, and agree with staff recommendation of approval. If you have any questions for me, I'm here to answer.
Questions for the applicant?
Do you have anything in mind for that property at this time?
We're looking at a couple, you know, maybe some, those storage yards facilities, like enclosed storage for RVs. We feel that in this area, being right next to PGI, that it's a very close proximity to those folks in this area. And if you've seen the ones going on Taylor Road, some of them are like really, really nice looking, great facade looking, parapet walls. And they've come a long way over the years. So that's one of the options that we're looking at. Right now, we are dealing with the water management district. A lot more wetlands than we, we thought that was on site, so we're kind of, we're stepping back and looking at what our options are actually are right now. But we still want to proceed with the annexation into the city.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak to the commission on this item should come to the podium, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the commission on this item should come to the podium and speak. You have three minutes. Last call. Motion to close a public hearing?
Motion to close a public hearing.
A second?
Second.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Okay, questions? Comments from the group? Okay, do I have a motion?
Okay, based on the evidence and testimony presented at this public hearing for item number AX dash zero three dash twenty-two, I find that this request is consistent with the city of Pontagorda Comprehensive Plan and move that we recommend to the City Council approval with the conditions of this request, the conditions outlined in that staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on. Quasi judicial CP dash zero three dash twenty-two.
There's two more.
And ordinance of the city of Pontagorda, Florida, amending the city of Pontagorda Comprehensive Plan, future land use map to include newly annexed lands, amending the future land use map to reflect the change in the current designation of low intensity industrial slash county to light industrial city for eleven point zero plus or minus acres, being more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated here in and addressed as thirty-two hundred and thirty-two forty Cooper Street, Pontagorda, Florida, providing for conflict and separability and providing an effective date.
Good afternoon. Lisa Hannan, zoning official, and I have been sworn. This is the companion, second companion amendment, the Conference of Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment for the annexation. We'd also like to enter our staff report into the record by reference in its entirety. Again, it is eleven point zero plus or minus acres and the annexation precipitates the need for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. The amendment will change the future land use map from county low intensity industrial to city light industrial and apply all the provisions of the city's Comprehensive Plan. It is consistent with the city's Comprehensive Plan, future land use objectives one point one point two and one point one point one four, policy one point one point one zero point one, coastal management element, policy two B point one point four point four, infrastructure objectives three point one point one, three point one point two, three point four point one, and policies three point two point two point three, three point four point one point one, three point seven point two point three. Housing objective four point one point eight, policies four point one point eight point two, four point one point eight point three, transportation objective seven point one point six and policy seven point one point three point five, intergovernmental coordination, policy nine point one point one point one, parent B, and capital improvements, objective ten point one point four, policy ten point one point four point one. Concurrent, the roadway. It is an existing roadway network. Warehouse and storage facilities have a low impact of traffic. Potable water and sanitary sewer, they are within the utility service area, but the utility improvements will be required and further reviewed. Stormwater and drainage will be required and further reviewed at time of DRC application submittal. Solid waste, the county's facility has sufficient capacity. Findings, it is eleven point zero plus or minus acres, compatible with adjacent uses, consistent with the twenty forty Comprehensive Plan. It expands non-residential footprint south, which is a natural progression along a major collector roadway, US forty-one. There are three onsite wetlands that have been observed per the applicant. Conclusions, change to the future land use map to light industrial city, consistent with the city's twenty forty Comprehensive Plan. Adjacent properties have similar zoning. It is a natural progression of annexation. It's contiguous to city boundaries and does not create any enclave. The Comprehensive Plan is one of three applications going along with the annexation and the plan development rezoning. Environmentally sensitive areas must be buffered and or mitigated. And urban design staff recommends approval with the stated conditions.
Okay, questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, would the applicant like to speak?
Again, Gary Bain with Southwest Engineering.
And you've been sworn, correct?
And I have been sworn.
Thank you.
And we're representing the Barstool Properties LLC. Again, we concur with staff's opinion and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Questions for the applicant? Okay, we're gonna move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, done. There isn't anybody. Sorry, I jumped ahead. Okay, comments?
Nope.
Is there a motion?
Oh, oh.
Can I just get who moved to close the public hearing? I didn't hear.
Okay, do I have a move to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, fine, all right.
Take it easy.
Okay. There's nobody here.
I know. You still have to follow procedure.
I got it.
Based on.
Go ahead, Chairman.
Based on the evidence and testimony presented at this public hearing for item number CP zero three dash two zero two two, I find that this request is consistent with the city of Pontagorda Comprehensive Plan and move that we recommend to the City Council approval with conditions, without any conditions, of this request. Or what the conditions previously stated.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to the next one. This is quasi judicial PD dash zero three dash twenty-two and ordinance of the City Council of Pontagorda, Florida, rezoning properties generally described as thirty-two hundred and thirty-two forty Cooper Street, Pontagorda, Florida, and more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated here in containing eleven point plus or minus acres from its current Charlotte County zoning classification of industrial general to city of Pontagorda Planned Employment Center Special Purpose Zoning Classification, providing for conflict and separability and providing an effective date.
Good afternoon. Lisa Hannan, zoning official, and I have been sworn. I'd like to enter our staff report into the record in its entirety by reference. This is the final application to go along with the annexation and the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Amendment to rezone the property to a Planned Employment Center Special Purpose. It is eleven plus or minus acres. The property is currently vacant and again, the companion application. The request is to change the zoning map from industrial general county to Planned Employment Center Special Purpose City. They're seeking approval of the conceptual site plan, the uses, structures and the development standards to include setbacks. The uses, again, it's existing vacant property. The proposed use is indoor/outdoor storage with associated parking and the stormwater management system. Finding, conformity with the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use objectives one point one point two, one point one point one four, policy one point one point one zero point one, coastal management element, policy two B point one point four point four, infrastructure element objectives three point one point one, three point one point two, three point four point one, policies three point two point two point three, three point four point one point one, three point seven point two point three, housing element objective four point one point eight and policies four point one point eight point two, four point one point eight point three. Recreational and open space elements not applicable. Transportation element objective seven point one point six and policy seven point one point three point five. Public schools is not applicable. It is a commercial venture. Intergovernmental coordination element policies nine point one point one point one, parent V and nine point one point two point six. Capital improvement, objective ten point one point four, policy ten point one point four point one. It is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Adjacent properties have similar zoning classifications. It mitigates or conflicts use of exist, of use on existing development. Current zoning is industrial, changing to a Planned Employment Center Special Purpose. Its consistent, consistent use is outlined in Exhibit B of the Plan Development Ordinance. Provides adequate public facilities amenities. Again, it is currently vacant. It is a proposed use indoor/outdoor storage and landscaping buffering will be required. Vehicular traffic, Cooper Street is the main street. It is currently county maintained and the use for storage has low traffic volumes. Preserves ecologically sensitive areas. Three wetland areas have been identified. Buffering and mitigation will be required and a complete environmental study will be required when they submit for development review. Mitigate unfavorable topographic and geological conditions. Must meet the Florida Building Code, Florida Electrical Code and FEMA flood base elevation, or regulations at time of development. And again, a complete environmental study will be required. Vehicular traffic, again, Cooper Street is county maintained. Sorry, that was a copy paste error there. Architectural treatments and site planning. All plan developments are subject to all the provisions of the Land Development Regulation articles. Article seven, the architectural provisions, article nine, streets, article ten, parking, article eleven, signage, article twelve, landscaping. These items are fully reviewed at the time of DRC Site Development Plan Application. Finding one of eleven acres. Finding two, three wetland areas are identified. Buffering mitigation is required. Must meet the Florida Building Code, Florida Electrical Code and FEMA regulations. Rezoning request is consistent with the twenty forty Comprehensive Plan and it is subject to all the articles listed in the staff report and on the slide. And finding six, stormwater and drainage will require full review at time of DRC Site Development Application Submittal. Utility improvements are required and will be fully reviewed at the time of DRC Site Application Submittal. The application is in order and meets statutory requirements. This is the third and final application, the rezoning in conjunction with the voluntary annexation and the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment. An environmental study will be required. Architectural and landscaping are gonna, are going to be required in full review at DRC. Stormwater drainage, utility improvements will require full review at. at DRC. DRC is required, and staff recommends approval, including the list of proposed uses, structures, setbacks, and development standards as outlined in Exhibit B attached to the Plan Development Ordinance. We're here with any questions?
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant like to make comment?
For the record, Gary Bain with Southwest Engineering and Design, I have been sworn, representing Barstool Properties. Lisa, you got a second to go back to the, the site plan real quick? Just want to clarify something. So on the exhibit, I know Ms. Hannan spoke a couple times that there's three wetlands on site. Those wetlands that were shown, you could see the kind of the hatch area around the perimeter of the property, they actually have been increased, and we're still negotiating with the Water Management District right now as how many wetlands we have on site. So there's probably going to be some type of mitigation done, not on site, but through a mitigation bank, so I just wanted to clarify that, that we're working through that process now. Do you have any other questions?
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
So seeing none, I'm gonna open the public hearing. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on this item. Please state your name for the record, and that you have been sworn. You'll have three minutes. Second call, this is a public hearing. Please state your name for the record, and that you've been sworn. You have three minutes. Final call, this is a public hearing. Please state your name for the record, and that you've been sworn. You have three minutes.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Seconded, seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing has been closed. Discussion? Somebody needs to make a motion.
I'll make a mo, I'll make the mo, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion. Based on the evidence and testimony presented at this public hearing for item number PD-03-2022, find that this request is consistent with the City of Pontagorda Comprehensive Plan, move that we recommend to the City Council approval, subject to the conditions outlined by the staff for this request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll, there's been a motion in a second to approve this item. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you, Lisa. All right, we tabled the Planning Commission till the next meeting, and everybody should send their comments to the clerk. Are there any staff comments before we adjourn?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we have member comments. Sherman?
Nope.
Paul?
Nope.
Harvey?
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank the staff and clerk's office for patience. This is probably a little bit more than was anticipated, but I really believe in process at times, and I'd like to do the best we can to get our process to we best serve the city government and the city council. So thank you for your patience, and again, thanks to the city staff.
Okay.
As a newbie and an alternate, if I could get more guidance on what exactly we're going to do, possibly meet with somebody from the city that would help me have a little more history on this.
Would that be through your office, Sarah? What did you say, Tom, please?
Either I get some more written instructions on this process, or meet with somebody from the city that can give me a little history about.
On the revisions to the bylaws?
Yes.
If you would like, would you like to speak over the phone? Our office is boarded up right now, so I'm not sure when it's going to be open again.
Okay. Phone is fine.
All right.
Lisa, anything?
No.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? I'll see you in October. Thank you.
We're gonna have about, hopefully, we don't lose power, and we can't send comments in for a while, because we won't have any internet. Hopefully it won't be that bad.
I hope so.